Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, good afternoon, and welcome to the July 28, 2025 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. It is the hour 6:15. I'm calling the meeting to order. Our first order of business for the first 45 minutes will hopefully be going downstairs for a non-public session, and we will resume regular business meeting at 7:00 p.m. approximately. So with that, I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under 91A 32L.
Sommo.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. The motion was by Selectman Valander, the second by Selectman Chartran. If there's no discussion, Madam Clerk, please.
Selectman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectman Gill?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
For this week's report. Project updates from Exeter Public Works. Information about National Night Out. River Advisory Committee hears updates on Pickpocket Dam. Progress made in Parks and Rec Center renovations. A reminder about the Great Cocktail Challenge. Planning Board reviews mixed-use development on Portsmouth Ave. And Exeter celebrates Independence two weeks late. For Exeter TV, I'm Bob Glowacki, and this is the Exeter Biweekly Report. Let's get started. Good afternoon, Exeter. Thanks for tuning into the show today. If you haven't already, hit the subscribe button and like this video to help spread word about the show and all things Exeter. For the first segment, Dan Monchek takes a trip around town to see what projects Public Works has going on.
With summer weather in full swing, the Exeter Department of Public Works has been hard at work to keep Exeter roads safe and smooth for all travelers. To accomplish this, there are a series of ongoing roadwork projects taking place right now. We went out to these project sites and met up with DPW to learn more about what they're doing to improve Exeter's roads. The first site we stopped at was the Linden Street Bridge. This bridge has been in need of repair for a little while now, and funds have finally been allocated to begin restoration.
The goal of this project was to stabilize the bridge abutments. Bridge was made in the 90s. It has wooden abutments. It washed out during the Mother's Day floods, so they're going to be increasing the footings on the bridge.
The bridge was closed down this past Monday and will remain closed until mid-November while repairs are underway. While the bridge is shut down, traffic is being diverted down Kimball Hill or back out to Front Street. Detour signs are already posted to note this change. Next, we stopped at the repaving project on Industrial Drive and Commerce Way. Last year, these roads were ground down and a base coat was applied to the surface. As part of a planned delay, the roads were left alone for a year while everything settled. This year, DPW came back to finish the job, and it should be complete by the end of July. The next site we visited was the Drinkwater Road Repaving Project. This road has been in need of repair for several years now, and it's finally time for the project to be completed. Most of the paving is already finished. DPW just needs to repave the last 500 feet where Drinkwater ties into High Street.
With the portholes filled, it'll be a lot safer out there for both pedestrians, bicyclists, and the motoring public.
Sidewalks along this road are also getting upgraded. They will be replaced and improved for pedestrian safety. Both the repaving and sidewalk replacement should be complete within the next few weeks. At our last stop, we went to Epping Road to see how the road widening project is coming along. This improvement will provide a safer path for pedestrians who access it. During construction, DPW will also be upgrading the drainage capacity, making sure that water drains where it's supposed to. While these projects may cause minor delays in the short term, in the long term, they will keep Exeter roads safe and in great condition, all thanks to the hard work put in by the Exeter DPW.
Up next, a quick reminder about the upcoming National Night Out with Detective Bruce Page.
Good afternoon. I'm Detective Page with the Exeter Police Department. I'm here to talk to you about National Night Out. National Night Out is going to be in the Townhouse Common again this year, just like last year, across from the police department. It's going to be August 5th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. This year, we've got a huge bonus. We're going to have a magician there. His name is Chris Herrick. He's going to be at 6 o'clock, from 6 o'clock to 7:00. We're going to have live music until then, until 6 o'clock. The two of us, the Beatles Tribute Band, will be here, just like last year. Some of the other events at National Night Out this year, we have a dunk tank. We've got a bunch of people that are recruited to go in the dunk tank this year. We have face painting. There's balloon animals, temporary tattoos. The Knights of Columbus will be giving out slushies again from our slushie machine that we have. Lions always gives out bottles, free bottles of water. A couple of food trucks out here. Lexi's and Whoa Nelly Deli will be here. So all kinds of cool stuff. We're hoping everybody comes out, enjoys themselves. You get to know the officers. You can come over to us, ask questions, like a personal level, you get to know the officers. This year, our event is sponsored by Seacoast Crime Stoppers. And we also have a couple of other sponsors that are going to pay for the magic act this year. Exeter Kiwanis and the Knights of Columbus are sponsoring the magic show, and we want to give a special thank you to Staples, who printed all our stuff out for us, Stratton Staples. So a big thank you to them, too. We hope everybody comes out, August 5th, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Townhouse Common. Thank you.
The River Advisory Committee met earlier this week to hear updates from Public Works on several river-related items, including an update on the Pickpocket Dam. This is your meeting minute for the July 17 River Advisory Committee meeting. Charged with advising the Select Board in all matters relating to the management of the Exeter and Swampscott River, the committee held its first meeting since December of last year to hear updates from Public Works on the Exeter Reservoir Dam and the Pickpocket Dam. Town engineer Paul Velosic was joined by Stephanie Huttuck from the engineering company VHB to present a final version of the feasibility study for the dam which sits just behind the surface water treatment plant on Portsmouth Ave.
Sometimes this dam is referred to the Water Works as the Water Works Dam. As you know, we got a letter of deficiency for a Pickpocket Dam a while back. At that time, the town decided to evaluate this Exeter Reservoir Dam. There's no letter of deficiency against the dam right now. This is just something that the town did on their own, proactively, to make sure we're maintaining our dams. So as part of that, we completed an updated breach analysis. The breach analysis found that the dam is correctly classified as a high-hazard dam. The reason why is because it overtops Portsmouth Avenue. It also floods the water treatment plant. And then down here is the pump station, this sewer pump station here. So this blue outline here is the 100-year extent from a breach, so we look at the 100-year storm if the dam were to fail.
The presentation went on to talk about the current structure and several alternatives should the town want to move forward with modifications to the dam. The alternatives involve raising the dam by a variety of heights, adjusting or replacing the spillways, and potentially adding materials to the front of the dam, also known as overtopping, to reinforce the structure.
You can see Alternative 2 is the highest by quite a bit, so that one was automatically nixed from just further investigation, which I'll talk about in a minute. Alternative 3, you can see, is the least expensive, but that's also the one that would require wiping out the water treatment plant, which that cost is not included in this. Alternative 4 and 1 are relatively close to each other, considering the overall costs. One cost that's not included in these, but highlighted at the bottom, is that reconstructing that sluice way to have adequate capacity is around a little over $1 million. So it gets pretty pricey there, but that's something that we would need regardless of the alternative.
After a presentation, DPW Director Steven Cronin talked about the status of the surface water treatment plant, which could be impacted by work on the reservoir dam.
You know, based on the condition of the existing facilities, the current treatment process, and current regulations, as well as projected regulations, rebuilding at the site is probably not going to be feasible. The existing facilities are just beyond their current useful life and really would need significant upgrades to meet any sort of new regulation. So the recommendation is likely going to be to replace the current facility at another location.
After a continued discussion on the alternatives, the meetings moved on to an update on the Pickpocket Dam project. The project has been awarded a Great Bay 2030 grant for $300,000, but has not received any other grant funding at this time. Paul Velosic described the scope of work that is being planned with the awarded grant funding.
The first two columns, the pre-design and survey, and also engineering and design is where this $300,000 effort will focus. But if you look at the very bottom, where it says "Submittal Completions" on that second column, we will go up to the 60% submission with the Great Bay 2030 funds.
The hope is that this work will provide the town enough information to begin reaching out to the public for feedback on proposed designs. Public Works is expected to have another update for the committee in September or October. The committee set their next meeting for September 18th. See you there. Renovations are underway at 10 Hampton Road, the future home of the Parks and Rec Department. We took a trip over to the renovations to learn more.
I'm here at 10 Hampton Road, the new multi-generational community center. As you can see behind me, we have a lot going on. We actually have siding that will be started this week to finish the exterior. We raised the second floor. All the multipurpose spaces are being redone. Our mechanicals are going in, our insulation's going in, our electrical's being updated. I mean, this is going to be a great space, and it's moving fast and on time.
Those to go in. This will be a water bubbler for this floor. Two multi rooms, this one and this one, and then a half-bouthe off the hallway.
Well, we truly want to make it a multi-generational community center. The front of the building, located, will have our senior lounge, which we're going to invite all of our senior citizens to come in and just relax, chill out with us. We'll have board games, periodicals, anything for them to keep busy, coffee stations so they can come and have their morning coffee with us. Tell us what they want.
Yeah, so this will be sort of our break room, which is just off the senior lounge here, so we'll have like a little coffee station, tea, things like that. We'll have some cabinets installed back in here with a refrigerator and a dishwasher, which will be really nice to use to clean up after luncheons and other programs that get a little messy.
While integrating different programs like preschool music, or preschool dance, or any type of things, and then in the afternoon, transition to more of a youth-based programming for maybe a teen center, or teen after-school program, or just an after-school program in general. So we want it to be used from 8:00 a.m. all the way to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and then used over the weekends.
We have a projector on the screen, so we'll be able to have a pull-down screen here so we can actually show more movies and not have a big space taken up by a large screen that's permanent. So we'll be able to offer seminars up here. We're thinking of moving and consolidating our senior luncheons up here as well, just to have a more homemade feel and really emphasize the space. I mean, we have Families First that already is looking forward to using this space, and a couple of other organizations, such as the Women's Club, for their needing space up here.
It's exciting because we see the progress. Hampshire Development Corporation has done an outstanding job managing our budget and keeping the project on task and on budget and on time. The project needs to be completed by the end of August, so everything is moving along splendidly, and it really is an exciting opportunity, being so close to our largest facility at the recreation park. In the future, we did do a site analysis before we bought the property. It can accommodate more parking and a large addition on the back. What that large addition comes out to be, who knows? We'll do a whole site analysis again, but in general, we'd love to have a multipurpose space where we could have a commercial kitchen, as well as a space for our summer camp to duck in during inclement weather.
Today is the first day of the Great Cocktail and Mocktail Challenge presented by the Exeter Area Chamber of Commerce. Gabe Perez has all the info you need to cast your vote in the competition.
Hi, it's Samantha with Exeter Area Chamber of Commerce, here to tell you today about the 2025 Cocktail and Mocktail Challenge. From July 18th through the 27th, you'll be able to visit participating restaurants, purchase their signature drinks, and vote online. It's as easy as that. We pour, you vote. Go to exeterarea.org for participating restaurants. We'll see you between July 18th and 27th. Cheers.
The Planning Board reviewed site plan and shoreline conditional use permit for the proposed redevelopment of 97 Portsmouth Ave, currently home to Blue Ribbon Dry Cleaners. Dan Monchek has this recap covering the proposed demolition and construction of a multi-use building in our Meeting Minute series.
This is your meeting minute for the July 10 Planning Board meeting. A representative from J. Kaylee Associates came in front of the board to discuss their application for site plan review and shoreline conditional use permit for the proposed redevelopment of the property located at 97 Portsmouth Ave.
Mr. Kaylee, at the time we were going through there, was contemplating a micro hotel and has made a change in favor of the MUND proposing 14 residential units, approximately 1,500 square feet of commercial slash retail, or potentially a coffee shop space in the first floor of the proposed building, as well as the small three-season outbuilding.
After hearing a presentation on the site plan, the board opened the floor to the public to speak about the proposed construction. Gary Diderio, a lawyer representing McLean Manor, the abutting condo property, came in front of the board to discuss concerns they had regarding the proposed building.
Parking is obviously a concern. Folks are familiar with the area. It's fairly tight as you drive around. There are multiple businesses there in addition to the residential units at McLean Manor. Realistically, chances are 14 residential units are going to result in more than 14 vehicles being at that property on a regular basis. For our purposes at McLean Manor, the concern is just to try to make sure that overflow parking doesn't end up at McLean Manor.
Mr. Diderio went on to suggest that some kind of separation be constructed between the two properties. He also noted concerns about how McLean Manor residents would be impacted by construction.
It's their home, so they're hoping that, you know, the hours will be reasonable, that the noise will be reasonable, that, you know, the project isn't something that's going to completely disrupt their lives during the time that it's going on.
A representative from the other abutting property, at Bank Prov, also mentioned concerns they had about parking impacts from the proposed building. Back in the 70s, there was a chemical spill at the proposed construction site that released contaminants into the area. A resident at McLean Manor brought up his concern that construction at this property might expose more contaminants.
Right now, our main concern is that when the building comes up, you know, being a cleaner, some perchylaphylene, I don't know what is, we have no idea what's underneath that slab.
To reassure Mr. Siegel, we are without question going to be doing some soil sampling, though none of these contaminants are typically clinging to mineral material. They dissolve and run into the water, particularly over that length of time.
The Planning Board then moved on to deliberation about the proposed project.
I think we're dealing with a difficult parcel in general. If you aren't familiar with it, you're going to see it pretty quickly, that it's a little bit complicated, and it's a lot, if you even look at the plan, there's arrows going seven different directions.
Yeah.
It's almost like a free-for-all. It's a pretty rough parking lot.
The board scheduled a site walk for August 13th at 8:00 a.m. that the public is welcome to attend. They then moved to table discussion about this property to their next meeting on August 28th in the Novak Room.
And for our last segment, we attended the American Independence Festival to learn more about how Exeter celebrates Independence two weeks late.
One of the major changes Exeter brings to its holidays is the celebration of Independence Day on July 16th as opposed to the 4th. While the United States celebrated its official resignation from the British Empire, word could not travel quite as easily. 12 days after the news began to spread, it would officially reach Exeter on July 16th, marking the town officially removed from British tyranny.
And for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor.
Now, 250 years after the Revolutionary War began, Exeter and the American Independence Museum honor our history of independence with the AIMFest, the American Independence Festival, bringing guests nationwide to celebrate the rich history of America's freedom. Vendors and reenactors set up shop right on the Folsom Tavern lawn, speaking with visitors about American history, or demonstrating different crafts and techniques implemented over 250 years ago. Special events are given at the main stage podium, including the official reading of the Declaration of Independence, speeches from town and state figures, and a demonstration of how revolutionary militiamen would conduct themselves. New Hampshire Senator Maggie Hassan had come to partake in the celebration as well.
Oh, this is just a great festival to help us kind of remember what our history is really about, remember what it took to form this wonderful country, and the principles of freedom and independence that are at our core. The Declaration is a compact. It says, "We get our independence as long as we, the citizens, continue to work together to make the Union more and more perfect." And one of the fun parts of today was talking about some of the people here from New Hampshire and from Exeter who did that, even when times got hard for them and their family. They believed in the concept, the idea that our founders set out, and this is really about all of us working together every day, every year, every generation, to make progress and work towards a more perfect Union.
With next year's festivals falling on the 250th anniversary of the United States, and particularly Exeter's independence, the AIMFest continues to grow and expand, inviting more to do, learn, see, and enjoy.
Before we wrap up the show, a quick reminder that the Sustainability Advisory Committee is hosting a styrofoam recycling event at Public Works, located at 13 Newfields Road, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. This free event is an opportunity for residents to drop off styrofoam, preventing it from going into landfill. That does it for this week's report. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe to help us spread the word. And head over to the town website to subscribe to the town's email newsletter to get this show and other local news sent straight to your inbox. We'll be back on August 1st for the next edition of the show. For Exeter TV, I'm Bob Glowacki, and this has been the Exeter Biweekly Report. Have a good weekend, Exeter. Have a good weekend, Exeter.
Okay, good evening again and welcome back to the July 28, 2025 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. The board has been in non-public for approximately the last 45 minutes and we're ready to start our regular business meeting as the hour is seven o'clock. I'd first like to start by introducing the board. To my right, Selectman Dan Chartren, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our vice chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
To my left, our clerk, Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening.
And we have our Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy with us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our recording secretary is...
Supposed to be here.
Okay, Joanna Bartel. I'd like to say good evening to those in the room, respective town staff, those watching at home. And introduce myself, I'm Nico Papakosandis. Our next item on the agenda is public comment, and looking around the room, I don't see any public, and we have nobody online, so we can jump right into the approval of our minutes, which was from our regular meeting of July 14, 2025. Were there any amendments or revisions?
I had none.
I had none.
Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of July 14, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. The motion was by Selectwoman Belanger, second by Selectwoman Gilman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous, thank you. We have a request from the Chair of the Pearpoint Park Stakeholders Advisory Committee to appoint Maisie Sanderson from an alternate member to a voting member, there's a vacancy there, serving as the Select Board Rep to the committee. I think this is a great idea, and Maisie's been very, very active and done some good work, so I would entertain a motion to appoint Maisie Sanderson from an alternate member to a voting member of the Pearpoint Park Stakeholder Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, it was by Selectwoman Belanger, the second by Selectwoman Cowan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. It's unanimous. We're gonna jump right in then to our discussion action items. We have an exciting update on the public safety complex. We have the chiefs from the Police and Fire Department, our Finance Director Corey Stevens, as well as the Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, so we would like to give the board a high-level overview of the project. Obviously, it got voted in last year, and we've been working pretty diligently as a group. I am sure you're gonna have more questions than this. This is the stage that we're at, so you can ask them, but we may not, you know, have the answers for you. But we will come back and give you another presentation when we know more. One of the things to remember as we're speaking, this is all preliminary, nothing has been bid out, we're still on cost estimates and that kind of thing. So you can see on the screen here, this is currently, the top, the top picture is the front of the building, and the bottom picture is the back of the building. It's pretty basic, as you can see, it's a rectangle building. There's not a lot of bells and whistles, a lot of the design elements had to be removed, which we'll talk about in a minute, but it does function for what we need, and so we are excited about it. So how did we get here? In 2024, there was a $17.5 million project cost that was approved at the deliberative session in March. On the floor of deliberative session, there was, it was voted to include net zero construction, but there was no dollar amount that was connected to that change. So at the time, I think it was reported that we could be able to do it. As you know, a lot of construction costs have changed since then, so it is, it has been somewhat difficult. To start, we hired an owner's project manager, or an OPM, which was a company called CHA out of Boston, and then we hired an architect group called Ted Galante Architects, also out of Boston. After we got those two vendors on board, we then interviewed for a construction manager, and we landed with Ekman Construction out of New Hampshire, so they're pretty well-known here in New Hampshire. With these partners in place, we worked on the project budget and initiated the design project, process, excuse me. Originally, when we went to the warrant in 2024, LBA, which was La Valley Brenzinger, I always say that incorrectly, excuse me, had proposed, due to our program requirements, approximately 23,000 square foot building. And at the time, that was the $17.5 million project budget that we went to the warrant with. When costs ended up coming in, they ended up coming in significantly higher, and we'll talk about that in a minute. With the help of CHA, which is our owner project manager and our architect Ted Galante, we came up with our first concept building. In September and October of 2024, we worked on that. That design yielded a building that was 20,000, 20,475 square feet. So it was about 3,000 square feet less, because we were designing knowing that we needed net zero and the budget that we had. That cost estimate, at that time, our initial cost estimate for that building, the total project cost came in at about $19 million. So from there, we had to pivot and change. Since that time, CHA, our OPM, had multiple staff changes, and the entire building project group decided it was appropriate to move on from them and take that money and put it into contingency. So that's the start. I'm gonna lead to Chief Pullen, who's gonna talk next.
Thank you. So, boy, it's been, it's been like four years. I look back when we signed for the scope with LBA, it was September of '21. So I'll just, I'll just quickly say that the energy in Vega that the town had and the employee, the town staff, we still have it, and it's been awesome to see everybody working together and collaborating together with the architects, with the program managers and things like that. It's been a great experience. To get into the weeds a little bit, I'll pass it off to Deputy Chief. When he started in March of '22, I assigned him role of Program Coordinator for the Police Department. So he's really been, hit the ground and been to all, every meeting that you could possibly think of, whether it's what kind of desks are gonna go in there, where everything's gonna be placed, locker rooms, everything. So with that'll do, I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief.
Thank you. Again, well, I'll echo what Melissa and the chief was saying, is, I started my notes off by saying how well this group has come together, and the group really is the architects, the construction manager, and the Town of Exeter, the executive people that have been put into this project. I used words like cohesive, we, the whole group, and even seeing the construction manager and the architect both say, like, this doesn't normally work this way. So I think we have the right people in the rooms and the right people working on this project, and it's with the one common goal, and it's with delivering a cost-effective facility for the Town of Exeter. So that was our number-one goal. So with that being said, it's a labor of love for the last three to four years for me, for this project. I'm heavily invested in this, and any questions, please fire them off, at least on the PD side. I'll never speak for the Fire Department side, but, I mean, I am, have this thing memorized from inside and out. So at, anytime throughout this, if you guys have questions, or at the end, if you have questions, or even after this, feel free to contact me, and I'd love to walk you through what we have. I was chosen tonight just to speak to some of the challenges that we faced, but they're not challenges in a negative form. It's more of the realism of what it takes to build, or to bring a modern facility to fruition and to do it cost-effectively. So there is challenges, and I just was gonna highlight them, but again, they're positive, they're positive ways of how we approached it. One of the biggest challenges we have, other than the budget, and it's not saying that we want more money, obviously, that's not it, that's a constraint, but one of the biggest challenges we have is the site. Now, the site's great. I will never, ever tell you that the site's not big enough to put the building on, but what we didn't really know was that there's two wetlands in the southern part of it. The building fits fine on it. It's the challenges of putting the asphalt apron, the parking lot, the turning radiuses for the fire engines. There is a lot more, and we're really constrained to where this building could really only fit in one aspect of it. Not to mention that we only have access really to Constitution Ave, so that's where your entrance has to be smack dab in the middle of two, you know, flanked by wetlands. So there was constraints with that, and there were challenges, but we worked on it. And I can't say enough about T-Gas, or Ted Galante Architect Studios, the architect coming up with workable solutions to where it's easily accessible for everyone to come to the Police Department and the Fire Substation, as well as emergency apparatus and vehicles, and our people coming to and from work. So that was one of the big challenges. Also, the site, it's a lot of ledge, and that is the biggest unknown that we have, and that's why you'll hear...
And boy, did we learn our lesson with ledge.
You'll hear the Assistant Town Manager kinda talk about how our contingency, you know, that's where some of the money has been reallocated for, because it is an unknown. Until we start blasting and digging, we're not gonna know where exactly all this ledge is. We have, there, there are consultants for that. They've shown us where they think the ledge is, but until they start doing that, that's the biggest unknown. Huge challenge, because that's not something we can attach a dollar sign definitively to. Everything else, they can tell us how much stuff costs, they just don't know how much they're gonna get into the grid. The other significant challenge for the site is, we didn't realize the site is a lot lower in the front part of the site than it is in the rear, which means it's on a grade, which means you have to bring a lot of earth in, you have to blow up a lot of earth on the backside, just to make the building flat and where cars can actually pass it, and more specifically, the fire engines, and different grades coming in and to out of the apparatus space. So those are all challenges. I actually like this picture. On the top, you can see the boulders that are still in front of the PD, because they're planning on using big boulders for deck, you know, to try to spruce up the front, and they're gonna, and so that they don't have to crush it up, or if they can't use it. But there has been so much talk about how to lower cost, use what's on the site, reuse it for different fill, instead of paying for some companies to take it off, that that was a big challenge that I felt that the board needed to hear, and it's been a year in the making of us trying to figure it out. One of the other big challenges was when, and we were all there, when the warrant article passed, awesome. I can't thank the town people enough and the town for championing that, but we will be the first net-zero police department in the state of New Hampshire. That is a huge challenge, because you have to generate your own power. The size of the building, you heard the Assistant Town Manager talk about how we've cut square footage, which means the building has shrunk down a good percentage, means there's not a lot of real estate to put the solar panels on the roof. So we've come up with innovative and cost-effective ways to add different areas to facilitate more solar panels. We're totally priced out of using geothermal wells, we can't afford it, so it's really was never an option, other than the first kinda meeting that we talked about it. So there's really only a few ways to generate power to be net zero. The building itself, new construction will be, it will be, you know, constructed or erected where, you know, it, it will save the energy, it's a matter of generating the energy. So that is one of the big hurdles that we've had, that I think we've successfully come up with viable solutions. So that was the second, one of the second channels, big challenge. The last one, and we talked about it, was the budget. The budget's the budget. Our dollar isn't worth as much as it was when we first got this approved, and when we first came in front of the board, even before I started saying this is what we wanted to come. It's the, we're seeing unparalleled inflation when it comes to construction projects. You know, certain tariffs are affecting the cost of different parts of the building. So the reality is, what happens then? There's really only one option, and that's to design a building that fits within the budget, and that's what I can sit in front of all of you today and tell you, that everyone that you have working on this project, that is the number-one goal, facility that is cost-effective, that's within our budget. And it's been, there's been a lot of erasers when it comes to the design aspect of it. We've gotten creative, and this is something that the chief and I saw when we went out to the Station Design Conference last year, coming up with rooms that are multifunctional and multi-use, so you're getting more bang for your buck. And that's where we've used every square inch of this new facility that's proposed to design something that's modern, professional, that will allow our people to do their business, but also make the best use of, of, you know, the different rooms in the whole facility. And that's coming up with, you know, gone are the old days of just having one little roll call room, you know, now it's a roll call room, a report writing room, a patrol hub, and you're getting use of it 24 hours a day, instead of just for a standard roll call room where you use it three times a day for 20 minutes. But it costs a lot of money to build. So we've looked for those innovative ways to maximize our dollar going into this. And I can't, again, I can't say enough good things about the architect, as well as the construction company. There, they've helped us along the whole way, and you have a lot of, you know, educated people that are coming up with these solutions, and no one's, no one's disshunning anything, everybody, it's a, it's a group atmosphere to it. So it's been a very positive process through that. So I wanna talk a little bit about the budgeting. You know, one of my least favorite days was called Value Engineering Day, where they, they had us all in the room, and I saw everything, all 44 things that were cost on the chopping block, and the whole group met with it, and we were able to shave off over a million dollars from the project cost that. But what I will say is, you have the sticker shock, yeah, that's great, we shaved it, but we didn't compromise the programming space for the Police Department and the Fire Substation. That's, that programming space has stayed constant throughout this entire project. Some of the interesting ways that we've, we've saved money was, you know, even the floor, the height between the floors, the first and second floor, you know, instead of going for 14 feet floors, we're going down to 12. All that is money that's being saved, because it goes 360 degrees around the building, and it, it, it's, it's all, everything has a dollar amount, and I learned that the hard way when I sat through that meeting, and you saw the stuff come off, and we, for the good of the order, we said, you know, we're gonna save some money doing it this way. But it didn't compromise the integrity of the building, and it didn't compromise how that building's gonna function. So that's the ultimate goal for this, and, you know, afterwards, you know, a lot of the stuff we'll never, ever see, and I don't claim to be an expert on, you know, stormwater runoff or anything like that, but that's some of the stuff that we've changed around to try to save money on the project. And then the police and fire went even further, and we reevaluated the IT portion of the building, and we identified stuff that we didn't need. Never, again, never, ever compromising the security, because that was one of my main speaking points on why we needed the new building, but, you know, we went through every camera, do we need this? Is this redundant? Is this, can we do without it? And we were able to shave off certain IT factors that all have a huge price point to it. So we were saving even more money as we went going along. You know, we eliminated extra security cameras, door readers, fingerprint readers, and various other expensive, unneeded IT systems that, yeah, they would be great in the, in the world if, if we had an unlimited budget, but they're not gonna impact our daily-day operations, and they're not gonna impact us being able to operate in the future as well. It's just, we're looking how to save as much money and get this, our ultimate goal is to take it from concept and get where they're actually starting to build this thing, because that means we've accomplished the goal, and I feel very confident that... that this, I would say, year-long process of actually working with Ted Galante Architect Studios and now the construction manager, we are at that point. We had a page turning in this very room where we went through every page of the construction documents and looked at it and to see if we were missing anything. And that was all parties involved in this process. So I'm glad to report that I feel very, very positive about this facility. You know, it's, it's, there's no excess in the building, yet we're also not compromising in something that the town's not going to be happy with as well. So that's, that's all I have to say. And again, any questions, you know, I will be happy to answer.
Any questions for the chief or deputy chief before we get to Fire Chief Pazan?
I'm going to hold my questions until we hear from, from actually.
Okay, all right.
Anybody down here for the, okay, great.
Well, thank you. I don't have much to say because Josh has been spearheading this and hats off to the police department. I mean, Josh has been fantastic advocating for both sides. What I've certainly learned is that when you're building a modern police station, it's a lot more involved than a fire substation. We're looking for space to house apparatus and some people, but we don't need the technology. We don't process evidence. So what they need to do there is much different than what we need. So I'm grateful for the work that we've all done, but, but Deputy Chief McCain is just, he's been in the weeds in this constantly and I've been super grateful. But overall, I mean, great project. We didn't, we all shaved off space. I think when I look back to, we know, we did early projections with our initial group we worked with, and they were trying to project out and they looked at 2024 as a projection of $689 a square foot. So that was like a year plus lookout and they expected it to escalation to go from the mid sixes to the high sixes. I called today and asked and today we're at $800 a square foot. So just put in perspective, so when we cut off 3,000 square feet of building, you know, we're in a couple million dollar area that we've cut off. And I totally agree, our program hasn't suffered. Obviously, the more space, the better, but we'll take what we can get. Our architect assured us this building will stand out in a positive way on Continental Drive. It's going to be a building we'll all be proud of. As an architect, obviously, that's his, his, his thing, right? Architects want to make pretty buildings. The builders want to build buildings. So it's been funny watching them work together to come to this, to where we are today. And we are getting there. We're 50% construction documents. So we're, we're making great progress and we're almost there. So I see the finish line. It's not far away.
Terrific.
Really? You want me to start? Okay. Do you want me to finish just real quick?
Yes, I actually, yeah.
So we're going to wrap it up and then we're going to be able to take whatever questions that you would like if that's okay?
Thank you, of course.
So, so where do we stand now, right? You've heard all of the work that's been happening. So just to remind everyone, we started with our first initial estimate at a $19 million total project cost. And that was in February of 2025. The project team, like they said, worked to reduce the project scope and we then got a second project estimate, construction project estimate of $16.5 million. Through some value engineering, we were able to reduce the construction cost down to 15.6 million. However, that still leaves us with approximately a $660,000 gap. Okay, so that's where we are today. To address the funding gap and move forward with the project, we would.
$660,000.
Yep. Don't worry, I'm coming up with an option here for you. So we would like the select board to consider that last year we received through the Invest New Hampshire program, $560,000. That was money that we got through the Gateway Project through a state program that incentivized cities and towns to help developers and projects that had affordable housing as part of their component. So the state gave us $560,000, which we are able to use for any municipal purpose. We have saved that trying to see, you know, we haven't come to ask for anything else as we went through this project. So we would like to consider that that money came from Epping Road, you know, from the Gateway and how nice it would be to invest it back into a building out in that area that's going to increase that property values out there. So we have $560,000, so we'll talk about that in a minute, but that is something that we would like to do. If you move forward with allocating that money, we still have about $100,000 gap. Like Josh said, we are waiting for final numbers on some of the IT things that we scaled back and our construction, our construction management team, Ekman, does think that there's a little bit more value engineering that we should be able to hit that $100,000 mark. So at this point, we feel comfortable if the board will consider using that money. If the board is not wanting to use that Invest New Hampshire money, we would need to go and put a warrant on the next warrant in March, asking for additional money because we do not have access to any other money that we would be able to use to, to reduce this delta. So I love how positive our team has been and they've been amazing. But one thing in defense of them, I will say, we are probably at our minimum size to continue to function. You kept hearing them say, it functions, it works, we've found ways to go. If we reduce it much more, we're dangerously close to not functioning. So we can't just value engineer another half a million dollars. We've, we've kind of taken everything off. So that would be our opportunity, whether it's a warrant article or this Invest New Hampshire grant money. Another thing to consider as we're talking about this project is typically, it was recommended to us by our construction team that on a construction project, about 10 to 15% is a good contingency when you're working on a construction project. To date, right now, we only have a 4% contingency.
Plus a lot of ledge.
Plus a lot of ledge. So, well, maybe, that's right. So what we have asked them to do is to work on an early site package to get the bidding for the site work done as soon as possible. So what we're trying to do is get the site work started in October, September, probably going to be October, November, so that if we come across things we cannot overcome, we have not completely missed the opportunity to potentially put something on the warrant if we need to. That being said, we think we can build the building. We're just trying to be proactive and prepare for the fact that we may hit something in the site that we're not prepared to, to be able to deal with. So we're trying to be forward-thinking, not miss deadlines and be transparent of some of the difficulties with the project and that we're all seeing them, we're all aware of them and we're all making sacrifices to the point where it is a functional building and we are thrilled with it, but we're probably at our max of what we can, we can pull out. I can't say enough about how well everybody is communicating and talking and I just echo what everybody says. It's, it's sort of a fun thing I don't get to do all the time, right? We don't have $17 million building projects and it's, it's great to see how interested everybody is in and, and how much work and time they are. One other thing that we didn't get to chat about was this net zero, right? So like Josh said, the geothermal wells, they weren't an option, right? We didn't have the budget. We don't have the amount of land needed. We might have been able to get creative, but the, the cost would have been exorbitant. So we're focusing on solar panels. In order to generate that much energy, one of the things we need to put in is a carport so that there's more space for more solar panels. It will cover a few of the cars, but it will act, give us access to more solar panels. That is a pretty significant cost. So if we get to our building project and we have to pull that carport, we could get it ready to accept a carport and put it on a warrant in the future. That would make us not net zero, but it would make us net zero ready as soon as we could put that carport on. The rest of the building would be designed to become net zero as soon as we could put that carport on. If we delay the building, if we say we don't have every single thing, it's actually going to cost us more. So we'd like to, we're so close and we think we have this great team of construction managers and architects that they're pretty confident we can do it, but the site work is a big piece. So as we go through CIP and as we go through budget, you'll hear Cory and I every once in a while remind people that we hope that we're not going to be asking for money, but we want to be transparent that we could come to November and December and have to add that. Okay, so now please feel free to ask whatever question.
Cory, did you have anything to add before I?
I can't even imagine what.
Okay, it's fine. So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna hit three.
Sure.
I was gonna try to stick it to two on my first round, but you just brought something up. Legally, we're okay with the net zero ready.
So the.
Based on the language.
The warrant says net zero construction. So the main building would be net zero construction and this would be like a phase one and phase two would be getting the second piece to put it all together. So that's how we would have to do that. We're trying not to do that.
I just, I appreciate the, the work. I really do. I can tell by listening to you and looking at your faces while you're talking about this, the collaborative effort with, I'm not even going to try to say the name, but you know who I'm talking about. All of you have been working, this was a big deal for the voters to pass this. It was a large amount and the growth was a really important part of not just the, your fire substation, but, you know, the growth and the condition of the police department and the facility overall. So I really appreciate your, you coming, you're updating us. With the 3,000 square, was it 3,000 square feet less, is there going to be future growths still on that site a possibility? Or are we just limited to the size of the building that you've reduced it to?
We can always go up.
That's what I was wondering, right? Hey, it's, it's what, 50 feet out there now?
I just, I just want to say, I don't know because I don't know if the building could handle it or anything. I would say for fire, there is probably a little bit more opportunity. I didn't mean to interrupt, Chief, excuse me. There's a little bit more opportunity for growth. Police, and you guys can, can finish this, we, we might have a little bit of wiggle room, but there is not going to be a bunch of extra space.
Yeah, that, well, that, it's just the growth is one of the things that we talked about when we passed, when we were talking about this warrant article. So that's why I wanted to touch on that.
Yeah.
It's the best that we can do with what we have. Absolutely. You've seen what we've done over at 20 Court. We're, we're good at adapting and making things work if we have to. I'm sure that will continue 10, 20 years from now, but we'll be okay.
Yeah, thank you. And then just one more is the tariffs. As have we, I know it's probably premature. Are we seeing tariffs affect? And I mean, they seem to be fluctuating anyway.
They talk about it. The construction company really weighs in on it. But they actually explained it. They sat and explained to us that, yes, it's something on the horizon. They're not overly concerned about it because certain items that they, they can go get from different areas that may not be as.
The potential hit, yes.
And then, then they even went as further where I was sitting in front of them and they were explaining and I started understanding was, you're talking about maybe one small aspect of the new facility. It could be, let's talk about the steel. It could be the steel. And there might be only a certain portion of that steel. So it's a very small percentage that they're concerned about with the tariffs. What concerns them is the inflation in construction that we, and no one could have expected in 2022 when we started this that you would be almost 25% more in inflation. And that's where it is. And it's, it's troublesome for municipalities or towns because we're always behind the eight ball. We're always six months behind where we need to be. And it's not anyone's fault. It's just the way how local government works. You need, you need, these things need to be voted in. And by the time you're voted in and what we've seen, that's what they were concerned about. And it's just, it was one of the challenges that I talked about. It's, you know, the first time I sat with the first architects and they showed us, whoa, look at all the space you're getting. You're like, wow, this is the greatest thing in the world. And then a year and a half later, that space has gone down. So now we've had to get creative because we can't afford the space that we thought we could three years ago.
Well, you've been very responsible, so thank you. And I'll, I'm all set for now.
Okay. Second woman, Gilman?
No, I just want to thank you for, for the effort you've put in here. You all sound very jazzed about it.
Well, there's days that I'm not so jazzed.
Especially after the value engineering. It is one of my favorite parts of this kind of process. Really tests on what are the needs and the wants, you know. But no, I appreciate what you've done and, and for giving this, the update and hopefully the ground is not surprise us.
Cross. Down here.
So I have a question about the $560,000. You know, I've been concerned about tax increment, finance money being used for this project. And that money in no way is connected with the tax increment finance district. It's money we receive from the state.
That is correct. This is not TIF money.
And I remember remarking, there are no strings attached to this money. And I remember you or Russ or maybe Nico saying, no, there are no strings attached. So.
I didn't say that.
I had to ask three times to be assured.
I was going to follow up on that. I don't ever remember getting a definitive answer.
I, I think that there are plenty of strings attached with that money, but I don't think that they are, they are tied to specific investment. I think that they are much more political in each.
Cory, can you?
Yeah, I, I went right to the city. Had a verbal conversation with somebody who told me that there were no strings attached. Spend the money. We'd like to hear how you spend it.
In terms of how we spend it?
Correct.
They do want to know how we spend it?
Can I just confirm with you that this is?
Okay.
And I didn't get a response.
Yeah, no, this was.
I had a conversation.
This was the Sununu slash fund that he wanted to distribute to towns and cities so that they could invest it however they wanted, which is like, let's not look a gift, let's not ask too hard or too many questions. This is money that came. We should use it how we think we should use it.
Sorry. That was my first question and thank you for answering that, Melissa and Cory. My second, it's a comment. It's not a question. The, I'm comfortable with this building being net zero ready or, you know, we can approach net zero. I think the deliberative session, putting the net zero requirement on this without raising the dollar amount, that to me felt like a mistake at the time. And in retrospect, it, it was a mistake. And I feel we're honoring the intent of the deliberative session when we say we may need to complete that with an additional dollar. So I'm willing to defend that move if it comes to that. And then my third com, or my second comment, I had a question and a comment. My third comment is I too am so impressed by the cohesion of the group that's working on this. I love that the fire department and the police department are working together so, so well and so seamlessly. I love that the executive team, Cory and Melissa are so involved. It's really a, it's proof positive that the vision of the Keegan Report is effective and, and vital and, and being enacted in this town. So I'm really pleased with how this is going despite how much, you know, value engineering you've had to do. And that is the nature of SB2 government in an inflationary environment. So I hear everything you're saying. There's nothing that I disagree with. And thank you for this report finally on all of this. It's great. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Of course. Select one, McCollum.
Yes, I'll, I will not, you know, continue to lavish praise, but, but I mean, I am really grateful. I think, I think that you have done a really remarkable job and I think, you know, we all collectively have learned some really important lessons about big infrastructure projects in the last couple of years that are helping us inform and make, you know, smart strategic investment and, and contingency plans. I appreciate all of that. I also think, I mean, I, I hear you on the, the net zero and I also think it is an important policy, you know, it was passed by the voters. We're, we are doing it in a way that still, you know, if I'm hearing you all, like really lets you do everything that you need to do, doesn't compromise anything and is going to save us money in the long run. And I think this is where we always get in trouble of like, okay, let's nickel and dime, you know, let's, let's shave this, these pieces off because we don't want to invest now, but we know that this is a good investment. And our voters have told us that they want this done like this. And so I do think, you know, and I am perfectly fine. It's that, you know, the Invest New Hampshire money is good. I think makes sense in this case. I think, you know, sets us, sends a message about our priorities and our values, which is public safety is important, the safety of our community is important, being environmentally conscious is important. the safety of our community is important, being environmentally conscious is important, and we're gonna maintain the integrity of our, of our important, you know, community services. I think that that's really important. There is a piece of me that's like, oh, this was for, you know, affordable housing, and we're increasing the property, you know, it's like, that, that piece is like, oh, you know, but I don't think that we need to tackle that policy issue in this decision right now. So I feel very strongly about supporting this, and, you know, really applaud the work that you all have done. Think it's really smart and strategic in order to, you know, build a box so you can add on to it. If, you know, if we grow, you know, by 10,000 people as a community, there is, you know, we are being for, you all are being forward-thinking in the construction of, of what this could look like to, to grow and meet the needs of future, of the future Exeter.
Thank you. So Cory, first of all, thank you for clarifying on the 560, because I know when we, when we talked about this last year, we kept asking, are there any strings attached? And I don't ever remember getting a definitive answer, so I'm glad at least for, for not only the board, but folks at home, we have a definitive answer that, yes, we can, we can use this money. So I'm satisfied, and thank you for the legwork that you did to, to get us that answer. I don't have any questions, because I talk with Assistant Town Manager and Finance Director on a weekly basis, and the chiefs are very gracious to invite me to come visit them every once in a while, so I just wanna take a second to, to say that, when this first started, I invited myself to one of your early meetings, because I was thinking to myself, wow, there's a lot of people in the room, because not only the, the chiefs and finance and the Assistant Town Manager, there was the Town Planner, and I think the Code Enforcement Officer, I'm like, boy, there's gonna be a lot of cooks in the kitchen, I gotta go in and see this. And I was so impressed, and this was in the early stages, I was so impressed with how they worked together. Now, they didn't always agree, and, but everybody was open to listening every, to everybody else's suggestions, and there was a lot of consideration, there was a great deal of respect. And I keep saying this over and over, year after year, that's one of the beauties of the assets that we have in this town, is that we've got all-star department heads that, you know, can come together and disagree and debate, but do it respectfully, taking into consideration what the voters asked them to do. I invited myself to one other meeting, and that's when they went through and discussed one of the consultants, and just watching the process of how they did a deep dive into the qualifications of each consultant and picking out the right one, it was, it was very impressive, and it was so impressive that I haven't invited myself back to any of the meetings, because we're in really good hands. You know, I'm appreciative of the challenges that you faced, and you've, you've not ever once thought about not going forward with what the voters asked for, and that's the net zero, because frankly, that could have been a very easy way to, you know, fit this in. But, you know, you've respected the voters, and, and I'm thankful for that. I'm still interested to see down the road how a net zero building, public safety building, the first in New Hampshire, will tolerate New Hampshire winters, but we'll find out. We'll find out. I appreciate the transparency of the entire team, and, and I just wanna close by particularly thanking Mr. Stevens, Ms. Roy, and Chief Poole and Deputy Chief McCain for their patience with me, because I've been an absolute nuisance for the last couple of months, saying, when can you come talk to us? And they was, and they kept saying, wait till we, we, something, so.
Do some value engineering.
This was a great presentation, and, you know, when you first started off and you said you weren't gonna be able to answer maybe some of our questions, I think this was a very thorough, informative update as to where you are now, and I, I know we're appreciative, and I think folks at home are gonna be appreciative. So thank you for the good work that you've been doing, and it is appreciated.
So can I just, one more?
Please.
Electric cars. I'm not asking if we're going to put electric car units, charger units, but the infrastructure, the PVC piping underground, thank you, for future. We have new ordinance in town, not that you have to buy pipe, but I thought it would be a good thing, it's just piping. If you're gonna build, dig up the ground, let's get the pipe in there.
And that's what both the construction manager and the architect have said, it's more cost-effective to
Do it now?
Dig it when the ground isn't covered by tons of concrete, or when they have the machines there. So in all of the, the plans, I mean, we've all hit on that, that we've seen, more like, why is there electric car chargers there? And they're like, well, if you do it once, it can be piped.
Yes. Thank you. I'll stop now.
No, that's all right. So I think the consensus of the board, what I'm hearing, perhaps I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the use of the $560,000 received from the Invest New Hampshire program towards the design and construction of the police and fire substation at 6 Continental Drive.
So moved. Second.
So motion, and the second, the motion was by Selectwoman Chartrand, second by Selectwoman Belanger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. Before you leave, next Tuesday, August 5th, National Night Out. Wanna give a quick plug, please?
Yes, four to seven, we're over there at the Town Commons. We're gonna have live music, there's gonna be a magician for an hour. It's gonna be so much fun, so. I know you've all signed up for the Dunk Tank. The two that have already done it, don't have to.
Detective Page already told me that he would arrest me if I come to my house and get me. So I'll be there.
You're saints for doing that. No pressure, but yeah, definitely. Four to seven, we'll see you there, it'll be great.
Terrific. Thank you. Any other questions for?
I'll be there, but I'm not going into the Dunk Tank.
I'll cover your ship.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, really.
Okay. Okay. In our last discussion item, thank you chiefs, we have our second and final reading of the Exeter Town Ordinance Amendment of Chapter Eight. From our last reading, we know that Assistant Manager Roy informed us that back in 2023, one RSA was repealed and replaced, and this is going through and referencing this current RSA, there are no other changes to it. And so we will do the second reading and then take a vote, if the board is inclined. The changes are to Ordinance 802.3J and 802.4C-6. This is an amendment to Chapter Eight of the Town of Exeter ordinances, the ordinance to regulate vendors, hawkers, peddlers, solicitors and other, intern and vendors, and door-to-door solicitation and canvassing. The change to 802.3J is to change New Hampshire RSA 321:19 to New Hampshire RSA 31:102-A, and the change to 8024C6 is to change New Hampshire RSA 321:19 to New Hampshire RSA 31:102B. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I have none.
Okay. If there are none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the revisions of Exeter Town ordinances, Chapter Eight as read in the two public readings on July 14th, 2025, and July 28th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in the second, the motion's by Selectwoman Belanger, the second by Selectwoman Cowan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. And if the board will forgive me, I'm saying who's second, motion and seconded for the video.
Oh, yes, do it, yes, no, I think that's a good idea for Joanna.
Okay, jumping into regular business, we have our Public Works Director Steve Cronin back. Thank you, Steve, for giving us another of your evenings. I think you have a few things for us tonight.
Yes, thank you. So before you tonight are two recommendations from the Public Works Department for contract awards. First is designer services for, Phase One designer services for the Pickpocket Dam Removal Project. As you may remember, Town Meeting approved up to, an authorization up to $2.1 million for removal of Pickpocket Dam. In addition to that, we've also applied for a number of grants, one of them being a $300,000 grant through the Great Bay 2030 Initiative for Design. What we're asking for tonight is a contract specific for, specific to design in the amount of $300,000. This scope of work includes six different tasks, first being topographic survey and wetland delineation, as well as geotechnical investigation, which will inform the initial design phases for the project. That'll get us through the 30 and 60% design phase. We'll also be doing some environmental analysis and preliminary permitting for the project, including rare species review and some work with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. It'll include cultural resource identification, as well as required Phase 1B archaeological survey. That work includes some shovel test pits and some lab work to identify some items of archaeological significance out there. Also included in this scope will be some initial public engagement for the project. This includes some public design meetings, as well as a butters-only meetings and a project site walk, walk, excuse me, as well as some project coordination with a number of the agencies that we have to work with in design, including Division of Historical Resources, the Army Corps of Engineers, DES, and, as well as keeping a revised advisory committee and the board updated on the process. So as I mentioned, this is a contract in the amount of $300,000, and the funding is directly from the grant.
Any questions for Director Cronin?
I have none.
Steve, I only have one. Who, who would be designated to sign the agreement? It wasn't clear when I went through the packet.
Would be the Town Manager or their designate.
Got it, okay, thank you. All right, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to award the Pickpocket Dam Removal Phase One Design Services to VHB in the amount of $300,000. The Great Bay 2030 funds will be utilized for this work, and the motion further would authorize the Town Manager or their designate to sign the appropriate paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Selectwoman Belanger, seconded by Selectwoman Gilman. Is there any discussion?
Could I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
So the scope of the work is, is starting now through January of 2026?
Correct.
For this pre, or Design Phase One?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? So motion in the second, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Also before you tonight is a recommendation to award a contract to Underwood Engineers for construction phase engineering services for the West Side Drive Drainage, Water, and Roadway Improvement Project. As you may remember, at your last meeting, you awarded the construction contract to Greenwich. This contract is to provide full-time construction administration and onsite inspection during the project. It includes a full-time resident engineer, as well as preparing contract documents, coordinating meetings, reviewing contractor'smittels, processing pay requisitions and change orders, issuing field directives, and supporting communication with butters and property owners. So this contract is a total value of $536,300, and it's being funded by the appropriations that were approved at Town Meeting.
And Steve, just a
Is that 563,500?
That's what
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yep, that's all right, just wanted to confirm.
Any questions or comments for Director Cronin? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to award the contract to Underwood Engineers Incorporated for construction phase engineering services for the West Side Drive Drainage, Water, and Roadway Improvements Project in the amount of $563,500, and to further authorize the Town Manager or their designate to sign the associated contract documents.
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Selectwoman Belanger, seconded by Selectwoman Gilman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. So this contract has already been approved by New Hampshire DES, we're just waiting on the final approval for the construction contract, and then we'll get signatures on that, and hopefully be able to break out fairly shortly, yeah.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us again tonight. Drive safely. Okay, Melissa, you speaking to the next one?
Let's see, yes.
The New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety.
Sure. So this is an annual grant application that we put in, that the, the police chief filled it all out, and I, it's pretty, pretty annual, sorry, I don't have more to say about that, but it is something that we do all the time. One thing that the chief said you might notice is speed signs, and that was in regards to our conversation about drink water, so they were requesting that.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? This is pretty straightforward, annually. I would entertain a motion to authorize the Exeter Police Department's application for the FFY 26 New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety Traffic Enforcement Patrols and Equipment Grant Application, as presented in the amount of $10,900, and the amended grant terms as presented in the Grand Agreement Amendment, notice for an adjusted total grant limitation of $16,610.50, and to further authorize the Town Manager or their designate to sign the agreement and the amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Selectwoman Belanger, seconded by Selectwoman Cowan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. And next, we have a tax interest refund request. We have a memo from our deputy tax collector. It was an email from Unitil Energy Systems requesting a tax interest fee refund in the amount of $782.32. Apparently, Unitil mailed three checks for three subsidiaries that own property at Exeter, but the checks were not received by the Exeter Tax Collection Department. Unitil then paid the tax and the interest via overnight mail, which was received on July 22nd, 2025. Unitil is requesting that the select board approve a refund of two interest fees totaling $782.32, which are unable to be waived by the deputy tax collector. The other four parcels' interest, respectively, at $11.87, were waived by the deputy tax collector, who I believe has authority up to $25.
Correct, yes.
Are there any questions? Then I would entertain a motion to refund the tax interest fee in the amount of $782.32 for Unitil Energy Systems for properties, Lot 5, dash 111, in the amount of $661, and map 46 Lot 3 at $181.71.
So moved.
Second.
And it's a motion by Selectwoman Belanger, and the second by Selectwoman Gilman.
Go ahead.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. And the last one.
Yuletide.
Yuletide fair.
The Town of Exeter Selectment, it always makes me insane.
It does me too. Oh, my gosh.
Can we deny it? No, I'm just kidding, until they
Exeter Select Board.
So we have a memo with supporting documentation, a letter from the Extra Area General Federation of Women's Clubs, and this was a letter requesting permission to place signs advertising the 46th Annual Yuletide Fair at the Stratum Cooperative Middle School. They like to do, and I think they do this annually as well, correct?
They do, yeah.
Yeah. They do, the smaller 21 by 18 lawn signs would be in various roadside locations in the extra area, and a larger sign would be placed at Guinea Road, the corner of Guinea Road and Hampton Road. The Yuletide Fair, in fact, is going to be held Saturday, November 22nd, 2025, and the signage is requested for Sunday, November 16th through Sunday, November 23rd, 2025. Any questions?
I have a comment.
Please.
I would like us to reach out to them and let them know that they should address us as the Exeter Select Board.
Sure.
We will do that.
Thank you.
And we should, we should do that moving forward with any organization.
Yeah.
Yeah, any, anytime that we get something addressed that way, a correction should go out.
Agreed. There are no other comments or questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Extra Area General Federation of Women's Clubs' request to place small 21 by 18 signs along the roadsides in the extra area, as well as a larger sign at Guinea Road and Hampton Road between the dates of November 16th and November 23rd of 2025.
I will make that motion as a member of the Exeter Select Board.
I'll second.
Okay. The motion was made by Selectman Chartrand, and the second was from Selectwoman Belanger. Of of the Exeter Select Board. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. And now, Ms. Roy, I'd ask you to present the Town Manager's Report, please.
Thank you. So, first of all, I'd like to apologize. Joanna is on vacation, and I mixed up the weeks, so please excuse me. So, she wasn't supposed to be here. That was, that was my fault. So, we've spent the last two weeks, Cory and I have been working on reviewing CIP proposals from the various departments. We've had quite a lot of meetings and discussions about that. I've been attending the Ten Hampton Road updates, very excited that we are, we're like about a month away. It is pretty darn excited. They're picking paint colors and all that stuff, so we're still on budget, we're still on time, so very exciting there. As you saw tonight, I'm very involved with the Police and Fire Substation Committee, so we've been working on that, and you got that report today. I actually participated in harassment training. We required all of our employees to participate in one of a few different harassment trainings, so I did that this week, or last week, excuse me. I've actually had a bunch of personnel issues from the HR side, so I can't speak about them, but that has been taking a significant amount of time. We held our bi-weekly leadership meeting, which, due to conflicts and people's schedule, unfortunately, ended up being with the Police and Fire Chiefs, Cory and myself, and it gave us an opportunity to continue talking about the building and what needed to happen, so that was nice. Cory and I have been meeting with Pearpoint Park. I met with, we met with Steve Jones and Amanda Kelly. They've been asking some questions about fundraising and various things and helping them with that. And we attended, or Cory and I attended the BRC kickoff meeting, which is always a fun time of year, and we're getting ready to be full-budget season. On Friday, all of the department heads got their budget templates, and we're told they have three weeks to get them in. So, that's it.
Great. Any questions for Melissa?
No. Thanks for what you're doing.
You're welcome.
Select Board Committee reports, and we'll start down here. Selectwoman Gilman, please.
I actually have nothing to report.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, now, well, there's something. Now, the Tax Exemptions and Credits Advisory Committee met and have come up with a couple of recommendations, but since not all of the members were there, I wanted to wait for the, I know it's gonna be unanimous by word anyway, but just to be, out of respect for the people that wanted to put this group together, to have them all there, to have their voice, vote on it, to make some recommendations and changes to our, the levels of our elderly exemption, and also a change to the disability and service-related disability veterans' credit. So, that will be coming back.
Could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Of Selectwoman Gilman. Did you attend the Facilities Advisory Committee that I missed because of a work commitment last Wednesday?
No.
You weren't in the room.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
So, I guess that means you'll be briefed tonight.
I will.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Facilities Advisory? They were working.
It was the same night as the CIP, and then.
Oh, that's right.
Rec Advisory was in there. That's why I know you weren't in the room.
Thank you.
I looked in the room because I came and I locked.
My apologies for putting you on the spot.
No, it's okay, Cass. I have it on for.
Sorry, T-Mark, I had your answer for you.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
You have the floor.
Okay, so, Wednesday, July 23rd, I was able to sit, come early for the first half hour of the CIP, not the CIP, but the Budget Recommendation Committee meeting, and then I watched the rest of it. Thank you, Exeter TV, because it keeps me informed. And then I went downstairs for our Recreation Advisory Board. Ten Hampton Road's on schedule. Sometime in October, they're looking for a ribbon-cutting event. A potential move sometime at the, in September, at which time they look to, they feel that the Rec Advisory, the Rec Department will be closed for up to three days for moving. And then Planet Playground, there was a little bit of a glitch on social media a few days ago. It had the ribbon-cutting for this Friday at 1:00. It got fixed. I believe it got fixed. Yes, I, I reached out to Greg, when I noticed it. So, I do, so if anyone saw that, there's a ribbon-cutting at 2:00 for Planet Playground. And the, they did it for 2:00, so the kids, camp kids can be there. The last day of camp is August 8th, so at 2:00, we should have quite a contingent of camp kids there, and I understand we'll have some speakers, two of which are sitting here. And then finally, they were able to do their chair, vice chair, clerk. So, Jen Harrington is the new chair. Nick Norden, am I saying his name correctly? Is the vice chair, and Bryn Sullivan is the clerk. And there was a big thank you to Stephanie Pappett Konstis, who's been the chair for a long time and has seen a lot of her goals met, and so her services chair for, I don't know how long now. She's got a well-deserved break. And thank you to Stephanie for all of her work chairing that Advisory Board. And that's it for me.
So, I have a report of Selectwoman Belanger proportions, I think. I had everything the week.
Yay, better you. I'm so glad. Thank you.
The Swayze Park trustees did not end up meeting, though the chair and I were here. They didn't have a quorum, because it was just the chair and I. So, they will meet on August 20th. I attended the Pearpoint Park Advisory Stakeholders Committee on September, July 17th, and they moved forward with what we gave them, and they spent the bulk of the meeting talking about how they're going to fundraise and who's gonna do what, and, and they got really creative with that. The same day, I attended the River Advisory Committee. We received an update on the Exeter Reservoir Dam Study, as well as the Pickpocket Dam Removal, and we, obviously, we moved to accept the $300,000. The other big grant that we applied for, which is the same one that we applied for the previous year, is still pending, and Mr. Velasic thought that perhaps we'd know by the fall. We have another NOAA grant out there that's been delayed due to new federal grant process, but he doesn't feel that we're gonna be a good match for that. And then there was one last grant, which was a natural coastal resiliency grant, in which we were not selected for that. So, the Pickpocket scope of work was also discussed. He plans to come before the Select Board in the next couple of weeks with an update. So, that was that. And then on July 23rd, I was unable to attend the BRC meeting. I did give Chair Kelly a little statement to read on behalf of the board, thanking the committee and looking forward to the challenging work that they have before them this fall. And the reason I wasn't there is because I attended the public meeting in Kensington over the, the groundwater investigation that the town is moving forward with, hopefully. I was there with Director Cronin and also Water and Sewer Director Steve Dalton. Our consultant was there, they gave a really good presentation. There was a, two managers from the New Hampshire DES who were absolutely brilliant in their ability to thoroughly answer questions. At my count, there were probably about 20 or 25 residents from the Town of Kensington, most of whom participated in the informal question-and-answer period. And at least to me, anyway, they seemed satisfied with the answers. They may not have liked them all, but they seemed satisfied with what DES provided for answers. There was only one person who offered formal testimony on the record, and that is a consultant that the Town of Kensington had hired. Written testimony is open for folks in Kensington through September 7th, and then, once that closes, we'll be able to move on the next step. So, and I know we'll be getting an update on that from Public Works. And lastly, today, I attended the trustee of the trust fund meeting, along with Finance Director Cory Stevens, and we expect them to, the trustees, to come before the Select Board in September to talk about possibly bringing the Swayze trust that is at Keybank in Ohio, in Ohio, back to New Hampshire. So, more to come on that. The trustees are gonna meet again next Monday to iron out some technical issues that Mr. Stevens will get them. Then one of them will go before the Swayze Park trustees in the meeting on the 20th of August, just to hopefully get their buy-in. They don't necessarily have to, but it'd be nice if we could all be on the same page. And I told them that they'd all be welcome to whatever Select Board meeting in September. So, that's my update. Correspondence, we had two pieces of correspondence. We had an update from NHMA, and we also had a handwritten note that I'm sure we all reviewed. And I talked with Assistant Town Manager Roy. I'm happy on behalf of the board to respond to this letter and offer that as correspondence in the next packet. I think she was looking for a response, so we'll come up with something, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah, thank you.
She wanted a response in the newspaper, right? That's what she said.
She requested that, and I'll write her a letter.
Yeah, which is our normal way of responding.
Correct. It seems that she's perhaps not up to speed on some things that have been happening in town for the last couple of years. So, that's all been reported vigorously in the newspaper throughout the years, so I'm happy to write a, a letter to her, myself.
Thank you for doing this.
Sure. And we'll include that in correspondence. Okay. The Select Board calendar for August and September, we've got back-to-back August 11th and August 18th. And then in September, September 2nd, which is a Tuesday because of the Labor Day holiday, September 15th and September 29th. And September 29th is when we can expect the draft budget to be presented to the board.
Excuse me.
Please.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just wanted to follow up on one thing that I missed from the Town Manager's Report.
Oh, of course.
I am working with MRI, which is Municipal Resource, Inc., and we have a temporary planner. We're just working on the paperwork that's going to be hopefully coming in two days a week in person, going to be able to attend Planning Board, all of that stuff. She was a former, excuse me, planner, I want to say in Peterborough. So, just to give you an update on that, I hope to be finishing that paperwork up this week.
That's good news. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Because we don't have a July, we didn't have our second meeting in July.
Right. And I want to thank you, because you worked incredibly vigorously with MRI to make sure we could get somebody that could be in here physically a couple of days a week. Appreciate that.
No problem.
Again, National Night Out, August 5th, four to seven. Townhouse Common, it's a good time, and hopefully, folks show up.
I'm going to try.
It was, it was very well-attended last year, and I think the new venue really works for that, so. With that, please, of course.
Just while I'm thinking about it, I'm sorry to interrupt you. If they are interested, we do have a site walk.
Okay.
On Wednesday, August 13th, at 97 Portsmouth Ave. And that is supposed to be on, I mean, I haven't seen the agenda yet, but it was, it should be on the agenda for the next night, so you might want to let them know, just in case.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, of course. I would entertain a motion to move into non-public under 91A, 32A, and L.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is by Selectwoman Belanger, seconded by Selectwoman Gilman. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please.
Selectwoman Gilman.
Aye.
Selectman Chartrand.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. The board will be moving into non-public. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels Six and 22. Channel Six is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.